Thank you.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that we go into the executive session on the authority of round general law sections forty-two dash forty-six dash five, front day, front eight, for the purpose of reviewing and approving matters which relate to the privacy of students and their records. Home instruction request and two, approval of executive session minutes of February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. Home instruction request. Any person can be discussed having some notification.
Thank you. Motion to second, go into executive session. Mr. James.
Who's on by all? The house is stalled.
Thank you. Brings us to the reason.
Please join me in congratulating and thanking the following. The following CTC hospitality teams competed in the ninth annual Pro Start competition hosted by the Rhode Island Hospitality Association. Hotel management first place, Jarro Blue Diamond Hotel. Isabella Zeborra, Megan Riley, Nicole Carnavah. Hotel management second place, Flyaway Hotel. Madison Brilliant, Jenna Ndomi, and Alyssa Scuncio. High school sophomore, Bella Santos. With the administrator, Christine Merrick. High school senior, Laura Donley, selected as one of eleven Rhode Island students to participate in the fifteenth annual Poetry Award competition. High school student, Dan Nemirofsky, for winning the three thousand and the boys' indoor track junior varsity state championship. And in attendance this evening, I wanna invite up Emily Myers. Emily, I'll meet you back probably in there. So Emily has been selected as Rhode Island's top middle-level youth volunteer in the two thousand and twenty Prudential Spirit of Community Award. She is also qualified for the President's Volunteer Service Award. And Emily, the school committee had purchased a pin to a recognized student right of that. So we just, I wanna congratulate you. First of all, I wanted you to share with them, what was it that you did to earn that award?
Hi, my name is Emily Myers and I'm fifteen years old. I am part of the SRI Four-H Dairy Club and the SRI Four-H Fair. We currently have a corned beef dinner that helps support our Four-H Fair. We raised roughly around six thousand, eight thousand dollars to help fund the fair. We are gonna be held, holding that Saturday. We help do that with the fair and help support all the Four-H kids that go. And we also have a livestock auction that raised around three thousand dollars to help with scholarships that we like to give the Four-H kids that help out and stuff and volunteer with the Four-H. We have an SRI fair that helps qualify kids for Biggie and helps kids learn more about Four-H and their animals and doing their projects. About a hundred and fifty people attend the Four-H fair and support the kids that come. I currently help at Meadowburg Farm helping milk with Brandon Kenyon. And I currently help do chores on Sunday and I'm always willing to help them. I always go down there and help them fix everything that they need and always are willing to help them and do what they need.
Excuse me, we have a, we have a question. Can't leave the podium yet.
I have a question. I just, I didn't always show John this Prudential Award, uh, which was organized in nineteen ninety-six.
Bill, can you turn the mic?
Okay.
It was nineteen ninety-six, if my memory should be correct, and Emily is the third Jarro whole area student to receive this award in, in a number of years. And I know her family, I know her father, and apple under four or five no tree, it's a volunteer in coast, so you should be very proud of your parents. And I know your parents are very proud of you.
Thank you.
Wait, this is the sign.
The money you raised for the corned beef, you helped us with the budget that you had.
You don't have to answer that. Okay, any other questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And next, I'd like to call up the high school girls indoor trap team. Um, so just one of the ladies, if you don't mind. Come and select. Just kinda line up. And then Coach Jonathan Sayer. So they're the winners of the Dwyer Division Championship with a regular season dual meet record of ten to nothing. Uh, we have quite a few members here this evening and Mr. Sayer is gonna announce their names and, um, what, what they want or award and also what their pin. And then after that, I spoke to the captains and they're gonna have a few words to say about their.
So as much as I'd like to take credit for all of the accomplishments for these girls' big season, they came to practice every day with a lot of intensity, they worked really hard. Even when they were not at practice, they were often during workouts, they needed to succeed. So this is my first season coaching track at the high school. I did track while I was in high school. At Jarro, um, it's a really great program, so I'm glad that these girls are showcasing everything to the program as well. Uh, so in attendance tonight, we have quite a few of the kids here. Someone presents their name, their pin, and the awards that they've gotten for the season that they'll be presented with, uh, tomorrow night at the Rhode Island Track Coaches Association banquet. Uh, Abby Cole was all division for the three thousand meter run, the fifteen hundred meter run, and the thousand meter run, and all class for the three thousand meter run as well. Anna McCroy was all division for the fifteen hundred meter run. Brooke Kanazit was all division for the six hundred meter run as a freshman. Emily Stevens was all division as part of the four by eight hundred meter row. And Stacia Delbonas was selected for the coaches award for leadership dedication and, uh, all-around energy raising for the track team.
Hello, I'm Stacia.
Well, I'm Talia.
And I'm Emily.
We're all seasons for this, uh, we're all captains for the season. Every girl on this team has worked so hard and every, every girl came to practice putting dedication and everyone deserves to be here. So a little award and our division championship, so it's very, it's awesome to see everyone on our teams here. We tried very hard this season. Um, I also tried to do a bit. I tried, uh, weight, which I've never done and as a senior, like surprising. But Coach Sayer put all of his work into all, all of us, but I want to say especially me because he was, he was a girl, um, has a head point. So, um, it was awesome to, so it was awesome, like how he showed me how to do it for me, yeah.
He's been very patient with us. He's put a lot of hard work into this, obviously, as well. And, um, all these girls, they have just great personalities and they're all very kind as well as hardworking. And there's not a day where I'm like, oh dang, track, oh no, the team's awful. No, there's never a day. I always think to myself, my teammates are there for me and I want to be there for my teammates. And we all work very well together. And Coach Sayer has been awesome and we all just work really well together. Um, through sickness, through everything. It's really important, um, yeah, and value every one of these girls.
And not only do we have a ton of great athletes and awesome coaches, but we're kinda like a little family. Like I've been on this team for thirty years now and these are like some of my best friends, so I think that's, I don't know, that's just awesome.
You have to meet so many people. It's just a great sport. So many people think it's just about running and you're, uh, you're gonna run two miles for a warm-up. So like there's so many different events. You could be throwing, jumping, sprinting, and long distance. You can try so many different events. So it's just an all-around great sport.
Turn this on.
Yes.
Off card goes original. In the past, we've been very active on this team. We always dread various aspects. However, what we must do now is come together and also recognize the incredible job of students like Jane, Susan, and Donna. In keeping it together and never missing the beat, dividing those all the information we needed, it's been hard. We haven't had a lot of support from this end of the room. We understand that and we feel sorry for them. And it's time you recognize your incredible, hard work and dedication for what you've done so far. I think it's high time you understood that and recognized. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Joe Gincarelli. I'm the principal of Rhode Island Valley School. So I, I'm up here just because I wanted to publicly invite you all to, um, our play, our Oak Valley School play. And, um, after the wonderful frozen junior middle school, um, I just wanted to at least offer you, um, an opportunity to attend. So this is a play that's written by high school students and, um, Oak Valley students end up performing it. So it's, uh, it's a great tie-in for our, uh, school specialty, which is, uh, our, our, our the arts. So, um, so just gonna pass this out and you're more than welcome to attend, so thank you. Oh, thank you. It's, uh, April, Saturday, April fourth.
Thank you.
Welcome. Seven o'clock.
Okay, uh, brings us to policy.
For improvement team, um, a policy that we looked at last time, uh, took into account those suggestions and comments made at that last meeting. And I am now recommending adoption of this policy, which has been reviewed by legal counsel.
So.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the school improvement team's policy discussion.
On page two of forty. On page two of forty, under governance, the second bullet, the sit will be led by two court facilitators. And then the last bullet that states the chair will have the discretion to limit. So who is the chair of the two court facilitators?
That's defined. Um, it, it should be the one of the co-chairs. Okay, is that last?
Your end. Thank you.
So on page one, uh, the membership process, uh, chapter. We did add last time, we did add that we want to be, uh, a member of the school committee, part of the school improvement team. Or as a selection committee. I personally feel that maybe two members will be better, um, from the school committee. Cause each of these school improvement teams will be, uh, in a school that is part of a town, right? So, uh, we have three members from each town. So I feel that the school committee is still holding all the responsibility for whatever the actions end up being resulting of activity of these school improvement teams. Uh, I personally feel like two members would be better.
Okay. Okay. Dave?
I wanted to echo that comment from your end. I didn't actually see any school, um, member of the school committee. I see, it says in a member of the school committee. I, it wasn't clear to me, uh, how that person would be designated.
So, uh, for that selection committee, a member of the school committee actually later this evening, um, under business, we have a subcommittee of the school committee. And if you were social improvements, then, um, we would designate that person for each school.
And to clarify something, or, um, I think what your end was saying, what we were talking in our minutes, which was effective in the last meeting, a conversation about having a member of the school committee actually on the sit as a liaison or representative there. And that seems to not be here in our vision.
Sorry.
So, um, at the last meeting, I had heard two different things. I had heard, um, the discussion about adding a member of the school committee on the.
Wait, let me go.
Um, and then I heard more people in favor of that than I heard people in favor of a member on the school, uh, the school committee on the sit team itself. One thing I did hear in the discussion was concern about the principal having too much power on the school improvement team. And, you know, one thing I was actually about, if you're gonna have someone on the school committee that's part of it, you know, that, that can also, ultimately, everything that they do, the budget that they approve, that school improvement plan they approve, it's gonna come to you as a full body for approval. So, you know, I think the concern would be, since it was talked about, the concern of the principal would have too much power. I think the ultimate, um, power of a school committee member to be on there might have too much importance. That, that was just trying to listen to all the feedback, I, I, you know, my thoughts, what you're implying, but.
I, I don't recall hearing anyone in, uh, opposition when we talked about it. I heard a few folks expressing the desire to have someone from the school committee. I don't remember hearing any opposition. So I'd love to hear more discussion about that. Uh, I still think that that would be beneficial. We, we talked about this, even though, uh, even if it's an executive or liaison member, it's not necessarily voting, just to avoid things being brought back and forth between the school organization. It's also my understanding that their, the sit team's role of hiring is not something that we come back to the board.
So the sit team's role of hiring would be to, um, consultation with the principal to develop who the hiring team would be. They could be a member of the sit that's on the hiring team, uh, that doesn't necessarily have to be that way. For example, if it's a science teacher and there's no sit member, that's not the science teacher, like you may wanna have on that interview team, a teacher, uh, you know, a parent. But it could include those members, but it doesn't have to.
Um, is that, who said you wanted to hear more discussion, is that? I'm, okay, let me just mention, it's one thing that I'm gonna suggest is board standing. But under governance, the third bullet of the governance, it says, um, every effort to function by consensus or general agreement of the, of members, I think that's redundant. I think consensus is okay just to have consensus. But that's my opinion. And then in the last sentence, the formal decisions of the sit shall be made by a majority vote of the members. If we're having consensus, consensus isn't always majority. I mean, you can determine the rules of consensus, the group can determine that. And if there is some disagreement with the consensus, I think there should be a plan for default consensus. Maybe the principal should be the final vote, or, um, if it's, if it's an even vote or if they can't reach consensus, then I think there needs to be a default plan first.
This one, Bill.
Question I have. As this school improvement team wanna be, uh, truly by, uh, solicitor of the same, it's not that we don't, uh, buy any organization board or something like that. But I don't, I don't have, remember any conversations with that issue. But, you know, uh, we had some in the past, I just made, made a few of the private community board and something that I started. If one of, other than the, 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 uh, by someone who maybe is dissatisfied with whether it's school improvement team is going or not, or, or.
The principals have requested that we do this, um, most of the draft of the policy, they've requested that we do any, any, any.
Uh, sorry, your end.
Yeah, I'm still, um, gonna go back to my, uh, there's no question. I mean, I think I would like to put a motion on the floor to amend the policy. If you change the membership process, um, to say that we want to have two members of the school committee, you know, this one.
I would, I would, I would recommend up to, on that, because if no committee members wanna participate in it, I think that we don't wanna hold up the sit team functioning. But then if up to two members wanna participate and you still have.
I agree with that. I would like to put a motion on the floor to amend the policy in, uh, part of the membership process. Um, to include that and up to two members of the school committee, selection committee. That's I'm talking about line four from the top of the membership process.
Second, per, per second section.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to amend the policy to have, uh, up to two school committee members and other business community citizens on it.
Yep.
On the, okay, uh, discussion. And I had Clay had a hand up before the motion. Do you wanna? Okay. And Craig.
Page one. The last, beginning of the last paragraph was, and, uh, starts bottom. The school committee shall review the membership composition of each sit. So the whole school committee is gonna review.
Yeah, so this isn't, this isn't oversight of the committee composition. This is active engagement.
Correct. I understand that. But even, even where it's highlighted in red, that's just a review of the application process. That's not, you're a sitting member of the sit committee.
Correct.
So. But the whole school committee is going to review each.
Yeah, I, I'm just. I, I guess, I, I, let me, let me take a step back and make sure we're all on the same page. My understanding of your end's motion is that on page one, under membership, the fourth line down, where it starts talking about the composition of the teams, it says balanced number of teachers, education support personnel, students, uh, parents, and up to two school committee members and other business and community citizens. My understanding is that the team composition, that your motion is to insert up to two committee members on that team.
Yes, that's my.
Okay, and, and that's the motion, the second and.
Will I take back my discussion? Cause I was referencing to the bottom paragraph.
Yeah, I, I got, I understand.
And now, now can I?
Yes, sir.
So isn't that going away from the premise, it's in the spirit of what the state was doing in the first place, was, which was getting us out of it?
I agree. It is.
I was in verification, so I have to be on the council booth. So up to two members of the school committee on the selection committee. So up to two members of the school committee on the selection committee or?
On this sit team itself, not the, not the selection. The set, selection, so the membership process section has a review that, you know, involves administration, members of the committee, and then actually a final review and vote by, I mean, not voting, but review of this committee itself by the full seating committee. Catherine.
So when decisions are made by the school improvement teams, what kind of decisions that they're making are coming back to us for voting purposes? Because I think what we're all kind of struggling with is these sit, sit school improvement teams are going to have a tremendous amount of power. If they haven't had some pass, we're going to get something very new for the principals to contend with. But also, we're trying to figure out, at least I'm trying to figure out, what are our responsibilities as a body? Because I think Marat, one of his issues, not to speak for you though, is we still have the total oversight for the community, for the schools, and yet the sit teams are going to be making a lot of decisions. And so how much oversight do we continue to have? And I think your thought on adding a school committee member to the team is that if these teams are going to be making five decisions, we should probably know about them. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
I was trying, this is part of general discussion, so we're certainly treading new grounds, and there's concern that we had run away from the school improvement team. I was very happy with the discussion at our last meeting, I'm really, unfortunately, this is not here, this is something that I wish you could add to. We put in a lot of safeguards, reviewing the meditative mix-up, having attendance if you wanted to at meetings or public meetings. Principal certainly involved in the meeting, the principal reports to the certain entity. So I think there are mechanisms, especially the review process of members, that we can get involved and assert ourselves, and there will be problems with the process, and we'll figure it out as we go. But I think that if we let the buildings try to manage themselves, we'll ultimately get what they think is the best answer coming to us, rather than us asserting ourselves in every step of the process.
I agree completely with Clay's position or comments on that. And I think that's the spirit and intention. We control policy, we control vision, and we control finances. Right? Outside of that, I think the intention behind this is that these individual teams and smaller groups are going to be deploying direct oversight and delivering on that overarching mission. I have concerns about putting school committee members on that. I think it, it could distort the application or the deliverable that we're hoping to achieve. So I, I'm not going to vote in favor of the motion. I think I like the policy. Bill?
Yeah, for a question, I, great program was not considered subject, somebody? It's, it's, what's the number, on the high school?
Yes, the career tech is a program that's in the high school, it's not a home school, it's still, it's Javo Tech, it's, it's still the high school. So we've had a school improvement team at that school for many years, and it's a high school team with Mr. Otten.
Catherine, you're right.
So, just to clarify, what will come before us, I'm very concerned about. So what will come before us in terms of, I'm sorry, I'm clearly not asking it well. What I'm trying to tease out, I think for everybody, is what exactly are they going to bring to us in order for us to make sense of it?
So they're going to be involved in the review of the annual school budget and developing the school budget proposal, which is going to come to you to vote on. You vote on the budget. So they're going to have input in the budget at the school level as part of the sit, but ultimately that budget still comes here for you to look at in the context of the entire district and to vote on. The other major component that they're going to do is the school improvement plan. So they're going to have input on developing that school improvement plan. However, it then is going to be brought to you, and the superintendent shall review and approve the plan after consultation with the school committee. So, you know, the plans will be presented to you, you will have input, and then as the superintendent will make a decision whether to approve or not. But certainly, you're not going to be able to do that with your input.
I agree with Clay and Ryan. I lived this for seven years as a high school administrator. I was on what was called the school improvement team. We called it the administrative team. Exactly what is in this policy was what I lived, and we didn't have, you know, we weren't led to really need people on it. I think that would just, I think, with my perspective, I don't think it would work. I think we need to have an open and free conversation, and I think that might have created a little topic, um, administrative, that didn't need to get anything. So that's just from my perspective, so I'm not going to vote for it. Thank you.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify, you know, the reason, my thinking behind the motion and generally this policy, it is something that I understand the district responding to the state legislation, so we don't have a whole lot of saying in terms of whether we want this to happen or not, it's going to happen. And I understand this is our best effort. However, to me, this whole panel mechanism, panel bodies of authority do look a little muddy. And my concern, my primary concern is that while some authorities being transferred to these school improvement teams, which in general I would support, but my principle is with authority comes responsibility, and I don't see that. I know we're saying that whatever the decision there will be, will come to the school committee before it's finally approved. And I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with that. So I don't know how it's going to work in reality. I, so that's why I'm trying, you know, my motion was to maybe not restrict these groups, and hopefully maybe work to the intended purpose and maybe benefit the education process for the diverse school that we have. But that was my thinking behind the motion, so I want to kind of at least ease the growing pain and maybe instill some order. I'm not saying there won't be anarchism or anything like that, no, but there is a process that's going to, that works this far, and so maybe we could help grow these groups with some help from the school. That was my whole thing. Again, in my opinion, authority comes with responsibility, so in general, I will vote abstaining, I'm not going to vote against this whole policy, whatever the general way it goes, I'm going to abstain. Because I just don't feel like I understand the long-term repercussions.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment to the policy? No? Okay. So then I'm going to put the motion to a vote, and this is a vote on the amendment only? Okay. And the amendment is to open up the sit team to up to two school committee members? Those in favor of the amendment? Those opposed? Those abstaining? Just, just did John?
John, John reviewed all of the changes, and he approved what's in front.
Did he comment, did John specifically comment on whether or not this, I mean, it's open to public, I assume it's, by definition, it has to fall under the law of any. Okay.
I'm just, food for thought, that's.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other food for thought? This is not an emotion, yes.
So, zooming out a little bit, I think this is an experiment, in terms of signing statement for me, and my vote is in support of this. My understanding is that we have a superintendent that will intervene when this, these sit teams get needed. We also have the power of the purse, so if something goes awry, the majority of this committee can stop the flow of money to any line item on the budget that they want. But I think this does transfer power to the buildings, and hopefully we can get more responsive and more customer-oriented focus, that this is based on Massachusetts, and hopefully we can implement some of Massachusetts' innovations, and see that in our schools.
Thank you. Further discussion on the adoption of the policy? No, then I'd like to put it, those in favor of adopting the sit team policy? Thank you. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Thank you. Policy is adopted. Accepting the revision, right?
Bye, thank you.
So we have, a motion is second to accept the revision to the policy? Discussion. Bill?
I think this is a start, but my issue is equity and the way money is raised, especially in the middle school. I believe, and maybe it's not the time to bring it up, maybe the committee thinks, I think we have all the rules and guidelines, they have to watch so we can have a better understanding of all the SAF, SAF accounts, as managers, who's voting on allocating this money, I'm sorry, I just get frustrated when I see a middle school, sixteen, or six thousand dollars, begin this year, where this money come from, which was raised during the prior year and moved up, or whatever. But the other thing is, that team here, the middle school grade team, they've only got twenty-four dollars and seventy-one cents in their account. How is it, how is it equitable for the students in the middle school? If one class over there is spending two, six, four, well, so far this year, they spent two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars so far this year, and the other school, other team hasn't even raised a nickel in spending. So I would be very concerned if I had a student that was in one of these teams, that didn't have that money in their, their accounts, so that their kids could, they could have some of the same benefits.
Thank you, I'm going to turn this over to Kate.
So, thank you, Mr. Day. After our last meeting, I met with Gail Wilcox and Susan Rogers, and we also met with Mr. Zenyan to look at these accounts. Essentially, the money that's in these accounts is money that's left from years of fundraising, from the PTO. There was a time when five dollars per student was, was assigned. And the money that is in these accounts now is just being spent down. No additional funds is being added to the, to it. So there are some teams over the years that spent more than other teams. But at this point, again, the money is just being spent down, and then it will go to zero. The amounts in the grade, orange team and gold team, that's the grade seven and eight team, and that is a situation where that money will be used for a Trinity field trip in the beginning of next school year. Those years, those grades loop, so that's why those accounts are so high. But again, once they get spent down, once the students go to that Trinity field trip in the fall, you're going to see that amount go down drastically, and it's not going to increase after that. So they are being spent down. We did clean some of them up. There were funds in, in accounts called fifth grade house and sixth grade house, and those really, it wouldn't, wasn't clear as to who that went to, so we moved that into some of the team funds, just to clean those up. And so then again, the students could access those funds, and the teachers could access that for the students. So that is the reason why they're not equitable again. It's been years of fundraising and just the way they spent it. But these will be spent down, and they will be reduced to zero. And I think that, I'll invite Mrs. Rogers if she wanted to add anything, or Gail Wilcox, who does work on the SAF funds all the time. So if there's anything I, that you wanted to add?
No, most of the balances, lucky balances you see here are just being rolled over from years of activity. I, I can tell anybody who, you know, if anyone has any questions on the, where the balance came from, if you just send me an email, or just let me know, I can, I can certainly prepare an analysis for you to tell you where it comes from.
Can you comment on the, when the, when the funds or the specific line items were created, were all grades funded equally?
I don't know the answer to that question, but my understanding is that most of the funds were raised through fundraising efforts, so depending on what the event was.
Okay.
And how much they raised is, is going to contribute to the amount that you see there.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions, comments from the committee? No? You're right.
I just wanted to add to Bill's statement that I also believe this is a beginning. I think a little bit more order will need to be brought to this. You know, it's money, at the end of the day, you don't want people to start disputing how they were spent, and where the interest went, and so on and so forth. So I think school administrations should keep that in mind, and maybe be a little bit more proactive at kind of figuring out how to handle this properly. That's all.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that SAF funds have to follow the exact same purchasing policies that operating budget funds or capital funds have to follow. So a requisition is entered, signed off by the signers of that group, and then a purchase order, it's turned into a purchase order, and we follow everything the same way.
I just.
Just, my concern was mostly what happens after the school graduates and class graduates from school, and then what happens to the money after that. That's what my comment was, I ran it towards.
Thanks.
Thank you. Craig?
One thing that confused me a little bit is, I don't know what Trinity is, but evidently one team raises for two years to go to a special event. Why isn't the whole grade doing it?
So what happens with, it's Trinity Wrap Playhouse in Providence, and basically, it's a revolving year, so the kids are raising it this year, but the kids that are raising the money, got the efforts from the money that was raised last year to go on the trip. So now they're going to raise the money and the kids, because it happens at the very beginning of the year. So it's always revolving. So last year's kids got to go from the previous year's raising, this year's kids got to go from last year's raising, and next year's kids will get to go from this year's raising.
Paying it forward.
It depends on if they continue to raise those funds. And a lot of this money is going away because donations used to be put into these accounts, and with the new policies, donations no longer go into these accounts.
So you're implying the whole grade does go, it's just teams?
Yeah, I think it's the grade, it's the grade levels, my understanding that it tends.
And like Bill said, why wouldn't, the numbers matter, be similar? What's that whole grade level?
My understanding is that's the grade seven and the grade eight teams. The orange and the gold. Does that help the answer? No?
No.
Okay.
Bill?
I'm back to the word, I think we need to get black and white sheets compared to Saudi, as they, as they, whatever the start date was. And, and go, go forward to that. Because we're still, uh, very confused. I've been here at one time, I tried to follow this year before, didn't get much support. I'm hoping, uh, this thing has been revised, uh, adopted to, uh, to, uh, non-revised in eight, revised in nineteen, and now it's already revised. So, it's been revised, but there's, there's gotta be original blueprint somewhere as it pertains to how this money can be allocated. I know at one time, there was a, a team of individuals, and it included students here in the school, that would allocate this money to certain things. So, I don't know where that went away or not, but there was that in, in the operation of the student activities fund to allocate money for certain things. So, I, I, I think that, maybe my, my next meet might be a little early, but certainly by the, the meeting in April, I think we should, should all have a copy of, of whatever information arises in the student's activity fund and get that. I guess when I ask it then, I'll, I'll make a request if I need it.
So, so just, so we understand what's gonna be asked. You're asking for the original documentation on the creation of these funds and how it's supposed to be managed?
Each individual fund?
There has to be some guidelines here when this thing was set up. And, and there has to be a trail to make sure that it's been followed over the years on how this money was allocated. And, and that's all I'm asking.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Been that long, okay.
Right, so we gotta go back at least five years?
Gil Cliffin, yeah, Gil Cliffin ran the SAF. When I was in school, it was seven weeks, so I don't know that we have a document when it started.
The, the SAF funds are audited on a yearly basis as part of the district's audit. Um, we've recently, with information from the auditors, we've transferred our data from a Quicken file to the Keystone file. And prior to that, Tony Boudreaux handled it, prior to that Patty DiBollino handled it. So, it has a running, there's running information, but there's a lot of it that would not be, um, on a computer. And after X number of years, we no longer have to keep those files. So, going back even to two thousand and one would be extremely difficult to find that information at this time. But we, we can do as much research as we can. I just don't think it's gonna be as readily available as it would normally.
Let me make this simple. Someone tell me if, I don't know, I'll pick a, I'll pick a thing here. Career, career and check, call it or the odds. Who, who determines how this money is allocated? And, and, you know, this is all I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not inclined up here with any misappropriation of funding or anything like that.
Totally understand that, yeah.
Just how did that, how could this, this, the eighth grade, sixth grade account dispersed? Who makes that decision?
Can I try to address that? I, I'm not, and I'm not exactly sure what you mean when you say allocated. So, if I'm not answering your question, let me know. But deposits come from all these different teams into the central office. Whatever team has raised the money, the money is, is deposited and credited to their account. That team then decides how they're going to spend the money. And as long as it fits the, um, the criteria of being spent for student purposes, the money is dispersed from that balance. So, when the money comes in, it's, we never take that money and allocate it among any student activity fund. We take it and we deposit it into the fund who raised the money or, you know, through, uh, fundraising. Or lots of the CTC ones are, uh, checks from students who wanna buy a, a jacket or a T-shirt. So, they, everybody throws in, you know, fifty dollars for a, a jacket. And then they take, you know, five hundred dollars from ten kids and they go out and buy, and buy the jackets. So, when you say allocated, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if I'm addressing what you're asking.
Oh, yeah, I think I'm getting a run on.
No, 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 please, please clarify.
Yeah, we have.
I think.
The question is for a signatory, and then with a nonprofit, they change offices often, and then we have to update signatory, so.
Right. So, so each student activity fund has two advisors and it's also signed off by the building principal. So, a dispersment request or a deposit will come over. It will be signed by the two advisors, it will be signed by the high school principal. It will come into the central office. It will be with making sure all of that has been ticked and tied and it will be deposited into the bank. When the dispersment requests come over to relieve that, those funds for just different dispersments, POs are put in the system, they're reviewed. And Susan and I have signatory, um, ability to sign check.
Is it possible to get that in writing somewhere?
Sure.
That's why I was asking again, maybe I didn't use the right legal words, but I apologize.
All right. So, any further discussion on this topic? We do have a motion and a second to accept the revision. Any further discussion? I'd like to move forward, okay, great. Those in favor of accepting the revision? It is unanimous, thank you all. This brings us to business.
Naming of the new Athletic Field House in honor of Maddie Potts. I recommend approval of the request of Stephanie, Dan, and Julia Potts to name the new Athletic Field House, the Maddie Potts Memorial Field House in honor, in honor of Madeline Grace Eggleston Potts.
So, second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to name the new Athletic Field House in honor of Maddie Potts. This motion before the committee, discussion, Bill?
Just for clarification, who, anybody out there might think we're a violation of some kind of policies. Probably about ninety-nine percent of this money is being raised by the Maddie Potts Foundation, so they're not.
Uh, we, we are allowed to name athletic buildings.
I just wanted to clear this up for, for someone that might be watching this and thinking that we're, we're, we're trying to do something. Wouldn't be the first time that it came to that.
Fair, fair enough. Correct, we can name. Any further discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
All right, for the two thousand twenty school committee meeting schedule revision, I recommend a slight revision to the two thousand twenty school committee meeting schedule. To align with the Chairhold Act requirements, revision is needed as adoption of the budget must occur by the third Tuesday in March. Therefore, you will need to adopt the FY twenty-one budget during your meeting on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty, and not on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. If you approve this change, there would be no meeting on March twenty-fourth. And as an aside, um, if you do approve, thank you very much.
Motion and second to approve the revision to the school committee's se- schedule, discussion? Great, those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Okay. Going up the vacancies?
Yes. Um, so, now that you've approved the school improvement team policy, um, and also we have a vacancy on our school safety team. Um, we have some vacancies indicated in red. And again, we did add this new committee listing of a school improvement team selection committee. And, um, we will need to have somebody for each school that has a school improvement team.
Great.
Chair, nominate as co-representative to Ashway and as a representative for the Hope Valley School, David Stahl. Uh, safety teams.
On both?
As a co-representative, Ashway and as a representative for Hope Valley.
So, you, you're making a motion to add Mr. Stahl to the Ashway School Safety Team and the Hope Valley Safety Team?
Well, I, I see this too for Richmond, so I'm assuming that's acceptable.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because.
That's what you requested.
No, 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 wait. I've never met this man before in my life. Okay, I'm sorry, so we have a motion to, to appoint, uh, Mr. Stahl to Ashway School and Hope Valley School Safety Teams.
Yes.
Second, the motion?
I have a second one.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, the volunteerism was to fill the vacancy for the Hope Valley School. Ashway School is in our backyard, literally in the church buildings used for the evacuation mills. So, there's some involvement there anyway, so that was the reason for just being an extra member on that.
Great, thank you. Further, yes, ma'am?
Um, somehow I thought I was on the safety, one of the numbers, I guess I'm not.
Okay. Yeah, you know, we're, we'll, okay, so why don't we do this? Let's take care of this, this motion and then we'll address if, if your participation in the school safety teams. Okay, for the motion before the body, the appointment of, of David to the Ashway and Hope Valley Safety Teams, those in favor? Thank you abstaining, one? It was seconded by.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a one more.
One, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Perfect, okay. Uh, Ms. McAllister, you had a comment in terms of participation on, on the school safety teams?
Somehow I thought I was on it, but I maybe misunderstood that.
Donna?
I was happy to nominate him to share with me the job.
I'll second that.
Fantastic, motion and second, any discussion on this? Those in favor? Abstaining, abstaining, Ms. McAllister, thank you. Perfect.
Since we're adding people?
Yep.
I'd love to add Bill Day to Hope Valley's. I know it, it goes across town lines, but I think he'd be, um, a good source of information for that.
Second.
Motion and second to appoint Bill Day to the Hope Valley, uh, Safety Team, any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you abstaining? Thank you. Um, and, and I know, I got a email from, from Lisa, I'm trying to find, I know she's not. It's for the sit team, so you, you know the, uh, recommendation to make on her behalf?
I'm just gonna pick one of the several teams.
Yeah, I, it wasn't clear, do you wanna put her on all of them? You're gonna pick one? Okay, yeah, I think I have a little more, put her on all of them, but, um, that's probably too much. Mm-hmm. So, that addresses the vacancy on the school safety teams. Before we start appointing to the sit teams, if you are on another one of these committees and you want to, um, you know, swap or, uh, uh, stop your participation in it? Okay, great, then let's move on to the, uh, school improvement team, uh, selection committee appointment. We have, uh, a number of openings and, um, if there are members of the school committee who would like to participate in that? Catherine?
So, I would like to be a part of the Hope Valley team.
I'd like to nominate Catherine Juisty to the Hope Valley sit team.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you abstaining? Thank you, all right.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Not that I am not on enough already, but I am on the, uh, High School, School Safety Team, so I will be happy to do the High School sit team.
Nominate Fred Boozon to the High School.
Motion and second, any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you abstaining? Thank you, sorry. Um, so that covers High School and Hope Valley, Linda?
I would like to, um, say that I'm interested in working on the Cala team.
Second.
I would, I would like to appoint, um, Linda Wild to the Cala sit.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on the appointment, Linda? No, those in favor? Thank you abstaining, that's everyone. Thank you.
Second.
Perfect. Motion and second to appoint Lisa, um, to the Ashway sit team, any discussion?
I'm going with David, would you prefer that? She gave, like every school, she was, um, seriously, so do you prefer that? I'm happy to.
I would very much like to do that, actually.
Would you?
Are you waiting on these?
No, don't.
Do you wanna with?
I'm gonna withdraw the motion and change it, David, for the Ashway.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, this is cross talk, can we?
Sorry, Chair.
Thank you. So, we had a motion withdrawn, I'm assuming the second is withdrawn, I believe that was.
Yep.
Thank you. A new motion was put forward and that's to.
Point, uh, David to the Ashway sit team.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have second, okay. Good, uh, discussion? Those in favor? Thank you abstaining, thank you, sir. Excellent, so that's High School, Cala, Ashway, Hope Valley. And can we? Did, did all the ones that she asked for get taken? Are you kidding me?
I'm not kidding.
Hey, let's put her on the middle school.
Is there a motion?
Oh, is the middle school still on?
Yes.
And I recommend Lisa and her to go to middle school.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second to appoint Lisa, uh, to the middle school sit team, any discussion? Those in favor? That's unanimous. Excellent, so that leaves Charleston and Richmond, right?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I nominate Linda McAllister to Charleston.
Thank you, we have a motion and second to appoint Ms. McAllister to Charleston's, uh, sit team, discussion? Those in favor? Thank you abstaining, thank you. And the last one, Richmond?
I, I would like to be nominated for the Richmond School improvement team.
I'd like. Click.
I nominate her after the Richmond School improvement team, second.
Perfect, motion and second, any discussion on that? Those in favor? Thank you abstaining, thank you, sir. That covers every vacancy and that was pretty efficiently done. Any, any further, um, adjustments or discussions on appointments by the committee members? No, fantastic, then we are gonna move forward to the final business item.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have two motions I'd like to make, but before I do, I'd like to first recognize Susan for providing us, showing many years of what we've done budget-wise. I found it very interesting. I found it very interesting. Hopefully, the town councils also will. So, I have a, a motion I want to make, but I, I'm gonna read a letter that we all sent. By, and, and I have her permission, by Heather Volte from Ashway. Hello, I am Heather Volte from Ashway. I have four children in the district, two are seniors at the high school, two are in sixth grade at the middle school. Yes, they are two sets of twins, God bless them. Most importantly, I want you to know that not all members of the Hopkinton community want you to cut the budget. This lady brought in perspective for me. When my husband and I bought our home here twenty-two years ago, we didn't know how long we'd stay. At the time, the school district was substandard, and we knew that we wanted our future children to have a quality education. We assumed we would either be moving or sending our children to private school. This was before charter schools took over. Luckily, by the time our children were heading to school, the district was turning around. During their time in the district, the district and its schools have only continued to excel. This excellence has been projected by teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, and administrative personnel. My children have thrived in their environment. Not all their teachers have been their or my favorite, but all have been dedicated to doing the best work they could to support, engage, and challenge my children. I now have two seniors determined to make a positive impact on our world. One of my daughters recently was accepted to Wells, West, Wellersley College Ed Department, and the number three liberal arts college in the country, attended famously by Hillary Clinton, Madeleine Albright, Koki Roberts, and Nora Ephron, among many. Other standouts in the field, while she is not sure of her path, she knows she wants to make the world a better place. Her sister knows her path and wants to become a social worker to help impact the lives of others in a positive way. While she has been accepted to each school she has applied for so far, she has not yet decided what school she wants to attend. Two different children, two different paths, yet Charahoe has enabled them both to reach for their dreams and to succeed. This is what Charahoe does for those who choose to avail themselves of, of its resources. It sets the bar high. It gives you a hand when you stumble and supports you when you need it. And it gives you the tools you need to succeed. This is not just for students who see a college path in the future. The same process holds true for students on other paths. A friend's daughter never felt school was her place, but she loved cosmetology and could see her future there. Her instructor set the bar high, helped her when she stumbled, and gave her the tools she needed to succeed. That young woman now is licensed and has a career she loves because of Charahoe. It distresses me to hear so many people complaining about the minor tax increases. I do understand that can be a burden and that sacrifices may have to be made. I just happen to believe that those sacrifices are worth it. It is unlikely my husband will receive, will receive an increase this year, and increases are far from guaranteed at the nonprofit where I work. My family will not have an income increase to match our tax increase, but our kids are worth the sacrifice. All kids are worth the sacrifice. I would argue that it might even be more important to meet the needs of those kids whose parents are struggling and who have to sacrifice the most. The education students receive and the skills they learn at Charahoe may be what they need to break a cycle of poverty or unemployment, so they do not have to struggle as much as their parents may be struggling. All of these students are going to be our leaders, our neighbors, our doctors, our business people, our EMTs, our hairdressers, our mechanics, our chefs, our caretakers. Selfishly, I want them to be the best, so I have, so I will have the best. I am willing to pay for that now, for their future, for my future, for all of our futures. It is short sight to, to shortchange their education for a few pennies, et cetera, et cetera. So, we sat with Mrs. Rogers, we looked at a variety of positions that we've already cut, did the math, and the only position, I'm gonna make a motion right now, I would like to bring back the BMA position that was cut from Charleston Elementary School. That's the motion.
Motion and a second to put the BMA position at Charleston Elementary School back into the budget. Discussion? You're at.
Uh, having gone through the, uh, especially at the elementary school, having gone through the same experience with my own child's, uh, education process results with and without BMA at Richmond School, I will support this motion. I've been always against cutting VMAs. I believe they do help. This is a good ROI on the money spend, and I will support adding that BMA position back.
Thank you. Additional discussion? George? That will add to the budget, the approximately sixty-one thousand dollars, that's correct. Ms. McAllister?
I also support that. Having been a school principal, I know that it's like, uh, it's a major issue in the school and it affects all teachers.
Thank you. Further discussion, Donna?
I will also support it because this is an initiative that we started. It was a very positive experience that, that we had in Richmond from adding this type of position.
Thank you. Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion? Keep it up, just so... Good. Opposed? Thank you, abstaining, I think we counted all out, okay.
Chair, at this time, I would make a motion to reduce the fund surplus to two percent.
Motion and a second to reduce the fund balance from, I don't know where it's at today, to, to, to two percent. Is it two point eight two? Approximately two point eight two to two, two percent. We have a motion, second discussion, Catherine?
I'm gonna vote in favor of this motion with reluctance. Um, that brings us down to about a million dollars, give or, give or, you know, plus or minus. It costs four million dollars a month to run Charahoe. Um, and I'm gonna again stress that this is kicking the problem down the road. We're gonna face this again, and Hopkinton, we're gonna face this again next year as we add more children. We're gonna have the same discussion. Um, I thought that the enclosure in the FYI section, or maybe, I'm sorry, it was in the policy or the business section, about how little we've really increased over the years was very enlightening, and many years when Hopkinton really decreased, and all of that's based on enrollment. So, I'll vote for it reluctantly, um, with the understanding of people that we're gonna have the same problem next year.
Thank you, Craig.
Catherine, I made this motion reluctantly also, but last year we were at two percent, and I know previous years, not necessarily in order, we've been at two percent before many times, but I agree with you. Mr. Ritchie warned us about this seven to eight years ago, and it's come to roost now. But, it's a political compromise. You know, hopefully we'll get support if we get below the four percent, which we, we somewhat promised. And I believe this gets us below the four percent, Fred.
Thank you. So, Bill, uh, can I, can I, as a comment as well?
That's never been my, never been my strong point, like, I don't think in this world, but I'll, I'll support this, but I also would like to really debate, like, Richard, as you mentioned, was with town councils the other night. The town councils, they created Charahoe. There's problems here with Charahoe, the town council's gotta work together to solve some of your problems. The school committee is at the whim, if I can call it whatever the town council, whether it be Charahoe Act or, or any other, uh, dealing with the state of our, you know, hopefully they're gonna move forward on that in the future.
Great, Donna?
Uh, sir, do you have a comment, please? Okay, I'd like to hear Sue's comment before I make my comment.
Um, I just feel that I have to caution you because Gail and I did some research, and we looked at the amount of money that we expended in two thousand eighteen versus what we expended in two thousand nineteen. So, one year's difference, actual expenditures, it went up by two point three million dollars. This year's budget is going up by one point four million dollars. That's it. Everything other than salaries and benefits is actually down by ninety thousand dollars. So, salaries and benefits are one hundred percent driving this budget, and those are fixed. If you find that you have to add a teacher, or, um, you know, all of a sudden something needs to be fixed, we don't have a lot of playroom. That's, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that there's very, very little room in this particular budget.
Donna?
And that's exactly the reason why I don't feel comfortable supporting moving down to two point oh. I could probably support something less than two point eight, but not necessarily two point oh. And I would like to suggest, which kind of piggybacks on what Bill just said, that the towns that feel that this is such a heavy impact on their senior citizens, their lower-income families, I would like to know that they do some things to give relief. Now, I do know Charleston does give relief for people below, a tax relief for people below a certain income level, so they're not burdened by the increased taxes. So, I would like to suggest that the towns look to their money spending and tax relief to help us meet the quality of the budget that allows us to continue with the quality education that was so beautifully put by Deb Parent. It, it makes me very nervous based on what Sue just said, and I did not know that that was a reality, that we don't have a lot of wiggle room in this budget. Okay, so I will not support this.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions from the committee? You're at.
As I believe Craig said, we were there at two percent before a number of times, and the school district survived, uh, and it's doing quite well, uh, due to the efforts of everybody. Uh, so I will support this. And the reason for that is that it, year to year is different, towns are also in different financial positions. They do not unfortunately control the inflow of money completely, I wish they did. But they face their own reality as well, so, uh, I don't believe they would just not give money to the school on the whim. They have their own financial responsibilities for their employees, for the town residents, and so on and so forth. So, I would, as I said before, I would not support cutting it to below two percent, but I feel that with effort, the two percent will work for the school district for the next budget year. So I will support this.
Ms. McAllister?
Didn't we do some work on two point four percent? Did we talk about that at some point and what that would look like?
With adding that BMA, um, if, if your goal is to get Hopkinton to four percent, if that's one of your goals, is to get Hopkinton to four percent, you would have to bring the fund balance down to two point zero nine percent. Other than that, you, by adding the BMA back in, you wouldn't, um, that's the minimum.
Sheila?
Uh, while, while we're thinking, I, I completely understand everybody's trepidation about going down all the way to two point oh. If you decide to go down to two point oh, I feel like after what Ms. Rogers just said, if you go down that low, I would like you to consider putting back the Spanish, the, the foreign language class that was taken out of the elementary school, which I don't know if that's possible, but if you're gonna go to the pain of going down to two percent, I just think that that is as egregious as the BMA. You know? I really feel like that people made a case for it in the open forum, which you guys all said you wanted to see what the taxpayers had to say, and they spoke very loudly about that topic. So, I think you should consider that, I don't know if it's possible though, but I understand that.
Thank you. Craig?
The math just doesn't work on that? So, even if we took away the BMA, we couldn't afford the teacher and getting Hopkinton to four?
If, by, by going all the way to two?
Right.
Can't, you cannot do both. Um, if you went down, if you tried to do both the BMA and the teacher, um, and went down to two percent fund balance, Hopkinton would be at four point one.
So...
I'd like to hear what Mr. Tony has to say.
Craig?
Yeah, thanks for everybody considering, you know, going down to two percent last year. Folks, we're at two percent, we survived. We're, um, we need the relief, so I don't know, I've attended most of the meetings I could, uh, to, to support the residents that I, I represent, and I'm hoping that you can do that for us. You know, I, I know there was discussion about two point four, but again, adding that position, uh, BMA, I'm not sure that person is... Um, adding that person back in, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't get us there, so. Uh, it just would prevent us from petitioning and state order of the general like we had to do last year. Um, and if they say no, we're, we're gonna commit. And, and, just so you know, we don't have a lot of discretionary money. You know, there's been a lot of talk about, um, knocking down the nineteen oh four building. We, we put money aside, we have about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, we need another two hundred to knock it down. And we're getting a lot of, um, a lot of chatter about that. Why don't you do it, we just don't have the money? And we, we, it's because we don't get the relief a lot of times in, in the budget. We run very leanly at, at the town level, and, um, there's a lot we can't do. We can't, we couldn't, uh, put another installment for the town hall renovation. We're two, two, um, tax years away from putting that together, so all the town offices are in one location. Haven't been able to do that either. So there's a lot of things, uh, DPW fixes trucks, they don't buy a new a lot of times, so it's just, we, we, I guess, we, we just need the relief, and I'm just hopeful that you can, you can do that for us, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Additional discussion? We're ready to take a vote on the motion to move the fund balance to two percent. Those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Thank you. And I don't think that that has to be ready tonight, right? It's something we're gonna do tomorrow, or next week, or you, to announce it. Right.
But, in about five minutes, Gail and I could just make sure our numbers match, and we'd be able to give you where the percentages are now.
Well, I think we can, um, continue with the rest of the agenda, and we can touch on that before we leave. Perfect, yes, sir. So, they're calculating it now, it'll take about five minutes. My recommendation is we continue to move forward with our agenda, and as soon as it's ready, we'll, we'll cut in. Alright, committee members, uh, I would like to move forward unless there's additional business to discuss with respect to the budget.
Oh, quick though, I'm sorry, I, no, everybody, everybody wants to get out, including myself, so. But I wanna touch on what Rich Nasany from the Richmond Town Council, Richmond Town Council President said in the public meeting, and which, which is, what he alluded to, he would like to have the school budget process start a little bit early, and maybe start from the time the current budget is, is, uh, adopted, such that there isn't some work done by the school, and then it goes back and forth between towns saying, we don't, we cannot give you that much, and schools saying, well, you know, we have, and so on and so forth. That's at least the way I understood his words.
Right.
Maybe I was wrong, but I have a feeling that would be beneficial for the school district to...
district to get the towns involved, maybe even sue them, to start this next budget work earlier, and don't give them something to look at when it's pretty much done by school.
Good. Thank you. Clay.
So, following up on Rich's request, I reminded him after that meeting that in August of two thousand seventeen, monthly meetings were set up to invite the town financial managers to, and as far as I know, there hasn't been any.
You lead a horse to water. Sheila.
I, I, I think also, it, it's important to, it's hard enough to plan as far in advance as you already are. I mean, you're trying to, don't be repeatedly here, it's so hard to predict the future, we're trying to, you're trying to budget already far in advance, and I, I felt like the gist of what Rich was saying, I've gotta be honest, I, I feel he's not here to defend himself, but I do feel that a lot of what he was saying was, if we, he wanted the towns to dictate it, but I think that, you know, his attitude of, I've only got a hundred dollars, you can only spend a hundred dollars, my attitude is, you know, then go get another job if there's a hundred and twenty dollars worth of bills to pay, you know what I mean? And that's kind of, but that's, you know, his own example, I'm just saying.
Thank you. Bill, and then Craig.
Just very quickly, you know, again, I said it a few minutes ago, towns created Charroh, towns will fix Charroh. There was a proposal a year ago at the omnibus meeting to have a rolling, uh...
Average.
Rolling average. Nobody ever discussed that, to best of my knowledge, at, at any level at the town level. Now, we have another proposal from Rich. Somebody has gotta get off their butt and get to other two towns together and say, look, we're gonna try to fix Charroh without impacting or hurting any town whatsoever. And if, if we wanna fix some of the problem we keep fighting over, somebody's gotta take the lead, somebody's gotta, it's gotta be the big boy in the room and, and do something about it.
Thank you. Craig, and then Marat.
Well, basically, I'd say what Bill just said, but I wanna add one thing to it, and that takes compromising, too.
All right. Marat, and then Sue has the numbers.
Okay. So, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that has been said. I've been there, I listened to all these proposals, and just as everybody else, I have not seen them to come to any fruition. However, there was an effort in good faith to put this forward, and so I'm saying that maybe there is, should be an effort on the school side to kinda try to bring that to life. If it doesn't succeed, well, at least you've tried.
Fair enough. Thank you. Sue, would you please give us the, the numbers?
So, the bottom line is now, now has an increase of one point nine five percent. The total budget is down to fifty-three million, five, one, two, nine, three, one, fifty-eight, which brings Charlestown to a negative point zero six. Richmond is a positive one point three eight, and Hopkinton is a positive three point nine.
Thank you. Ms. Rinaldo.
Dollars, dollar wise, adding the BMA and going to two percent, what does that momentarily mean? Is that percentage? Dollar wise?
Yeah, while we...
It brought us, at, at the district financial meeting, we had a bottom line budget of two point seven one. And now, adding the BMA, bringing the fund balance down to two percent, you have a bottom line of one point nine five. Hopkinton went from four point six six to three point nine.
That's the percent. You're, you're looking for the dollar amount that was reduced after we take into account the BMA addition?
Yeah, how much was the BMA percent momentarily?
Okay.
And how much is the reduction from two point eight to two percent dollar?
Do we know that?
The BMA was sixty thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. And...
Sixty three, one ten?
Sixty, one ten. And bringing it down to two percent was, um, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars?
How much?
Four fifty-nine, rounded.
Appreciate that. Great. So, that moves us on to consent agenda items. What needs to be polled? Anything need to be polled?
A one, two, four.
No, so, we had a poll, we had everybody there for the third, and I think we had everybody here for the fifth, and honestly, yeah. Oh, that's right.
So, A one needs to be polled?
Two and four. Okay. Great. Anything else need to be polled?
Chair, make a motion to move the remainder?
Thank you. Uh, those in favor? All right, that's unanimous.
Chair, make a motion to approve A one executive session minutes of February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty?
Motion second for A one. Discussion. Those in favor? Abstaining? Thank you.
Chair, make a motion to approve A two regular session minutes of February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty?
Motion second for A two. Discussion. Those in favor? Thank you abstaining. George, thank you.
Chair, make a motion to approve A four special meeting of March fifth, two thousand twenty?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? All right, abstaining? All right. Reports.
First, the subcommittee reports. The Necessity for School Construction Committee will meet on Thursday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, at five P M. in the high school library. Attached are the draft minutes of their initial meeting, which took place on February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. The Special Education Local Advisory Committee will meet on Thursday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty, at six P M. in the middle school library. The Charroh Alternative Learning Academy Comprehensive Support and Improvement Community Advisory Board, known as the CAB, will meet on Thursday, March twelfth, two thousand twenty, at five o'clock P M. in the Cala ALP, ALP Common Room one twenty-four. For our superintendent's report for CTC enrollment, I'm very pleased to report that our applications have increased, that as of the due date, February fifteenth, there were three hundred and nineteen applications received compared to two hundred and eighty-eight last year. Most of our programs are filled, and we have placed some students on a waiting list. There are a few programs that there are still spaces, so applications can still come in. And again, there are, unfortunately, for every year, all of the students that apply, they don't all end up deciding to come, so that's why those people on a waiting list still have, have a good chance. Next, virtual instructional day. So, just wanted to give you a report on that. When we, when the school committee discussed this, back when the legislation first came out, some concerns were about equity and accountability. And I would say these concerns still exist. Right now, in the state, there is no approved plan in place for a public school. The school that recently had to close that did provide virtual learning, that is a private school, and they, they're not required to submit a plan to the state for approval. However, the information is rapidly changing. And as of this week, I know that there is an application that has been submitted to the Rhode Island Department of Ed, and in speaking with the deputy commissioner yesterday, there's a probable chance that that plan will be approved. It's been submitted by East Providence, and they are working with Department of, of Education now to address some concerns and questions about equity and, like I said, accountability. Some concerns that I have is starting to look at the application, which you, a copy of that is in your packet. I, I feel like for grade five through twelve, we're in good shape, that we have students that all have one-to-one, all have our laptops, although we can't guarantee that they all have internet access at home. However, for K to four in the district, our ratio is two to one, so each student does not have their own laptop. Also, we have to consider how to provide for special education service delivery. Again, there's some families that just do not have internet access, and also, how do we monitor attendance and participation if we were to offer a virtual instructional plan? The other thing to consider is right now, on the Department of Ed website, if you do have a plan that's approved on the website, it's saying that the maximum number of days that it can apply to is three per school year. So, that's a, that's something else to, to think about. However, you know, as this information continues to change rapidly, we are being proactive to develop and start to develop a plan of what it might look like in Charroh, and to start to respond to that application. We are hoping that Ride will publish an exemplar for us this week, and my goal will be to bring it back to at the next meeting, at least as a business item for further discussion, and maybe we'll have more progress on our application at that time. Okay. Next, Odyssey. So, we have the Louisville, Louisville buffet scheduled for March twentieth at four thirty to seven P M., and Odyssey is scheduled for March twenty-first, from ten A M. to four P M. In your packet, you'll see the design, and you also have buttons, and I think our twelfth grade student did a beautiful job of designing that this year. Kindergarten registration, just a reminder, it's March seventeenth and eighteenth. Those are at the elementary schools, and those registrations run from ten A M. to six P M., and it will also take place on March twenty-first, from ten A M. to one P M. during Odyssey. I'm also very pleased to let you know that we have campus tennis court windscreen that has been put up recently, and I just wanted to report that those were purchased between the SAF account for athletics and the sports boosters. So, the SAF account helped to purchase the windscreen, and I think that the booster's additional funds really helped to add that extra special Charroh touch to the screens, and you can see a picture in your packet to get an idea of what they look like. But they will help the tennis players deal with the twenty-five mile an hour north wind that blows in the spring. The last item is, I wanted to give you an update on the Director of Administration and Finance position. We had posted that. Unfortunately, we were not able to fill it at this time, and so we have reposted it. You'll notice in your packet a letter from Susan Rogers, who's really willing to stay on and help us out in this time of need. And I just thought it would be a good time to just report on the work that I've done with Susan over the past few years, and just to remark on how positive she is on a, no, don't laugh, you know you are, on a daily basis, highly effective, the most highly effective business manager I've ever worked with in over thirty years in education. The most committed person I know, other than maybe Mr. Richie, was to Charroh Regional School District. I know she would do anything for this district. And I think she's also selfless. She's not ever gonna promote herself, she's never gonna come and puff up her chest and tell you how wonderful she is, she just does her job every day competently, and she will hate me for saying all of these things. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was recognized, and I, I just, there's no words to say how much I appreciate the fact that she is willing to stay on right now, when she could be enjoying time with her grandchild and relaxing. So, I really wanna thank her very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue.
All right. Coming events. March eleventh, the class of two thousand twenty-one Dining for Dollars at Longo's Restaurant in Westerly. March twelfth, the Ashway School Vision Screenings. March twelfth, class of two thousand twenty-three Dodgeball Tournament from three to five P M. in the high school gym. On March thirteenth, the elementary grading period ends for trimester two. On March thirteenth, there's a National Honors, and by the way, Friday, the thirteenth, there's a National Honor Society Volleyball Tournament for Charity at two thirty P M. in the high school gym. On March ninth to March sixteenth, the Ashway School PTO Penny Wars are taking place. March sixteenth to March twenty-seventh, there's a class of two thousand twenty clothing sale. March eighteenth, the Richmond School PTO is having a meeting at six thirty in the library. And March nineteenth, we have an early release day, the campus will be dismissed at twelve forty-five P M., and the elementary schools at one fifty-five P M.
Thank you. Thank you. School committee requests for future agenda items or legal opinions. Bill?
I have a couple things. One, I'd like to encourage anyone watching this to attend the Odyssey Louisville buffet. It's probably one of the best meals you're gonna get for the price. And the other thing that people from Charroh again opportunity to see about students working in the hospitality end of it, in the kitchen and all that other stuff, it's just a great fun way to, I know a number of committee members over the years have attended that, but I, I just wanna put an extra plug in for that because it's, it's the greatest of meals you're gonna have for the money.
Thank you.
The, the other thing I wanna do, I, I read the email I get from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, and I'm very concerned on a lot of things I don't know of anybody else has the time that I do, but in the past, we've kinda had some, maybe heads up on some things that maybe possibly we might wanna take a stance on here and there, and I know Jane, you're in the middle of a lot of things, and, you know, it's just something that maybe before the legislature starts to wind down, that we could get a little heads up on things in that respect. One of them that kinda really jumped out at me, and we had a young lady here tonight that volunteered all over the place, and there's a bill, Senate, House Bill seven, eight, ten, and it's community service from K to twelve. That, that is, that bill is in, in the House right now. They're, they're gonna, they wanna require community service from K to twelve. You know, you know, volunteerism shouldn't be forced on people. The stardom in the kindergarten is, is what, what's wrong with what these people up there are trying to do to our, our state and our education system. The one request that I do have, I'd like to, I'll mention it to Jane after because it's a school safety issue, an executive session, I'd like to have that put on the agenda.
Okay. He's got a school safety issue, he wants an executive session.
And I'll, I'll mention it after, after the, the meeting, as to what the, what the subject will be. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna.
Necessity is the mother of invention, and I'm really curious as to what we're going to do with the virtual school day, so I would like to hear more about that. And with the virus spreading and the threat of closing schools, and I do remember that when we put the one-on-one, the one-to-one program in, I asked Barry, why do we have to make up snow days if we can tele, tele move or whatever? So, I would love to hear more of what's happening with that, because we do need to be ready to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig?
I have some questions on the budget process, and I'd like to sum you up.
I have some questions on the budget process, and I'd like for somebody to reach out and ask the appropriate agency to do so. Why are we budgeting the C C R?
Okay.
I have consulted with John Anderson on that, from that first meeting when it was brought up, and I know that was a request for a future meeting, and he, he just said that he's sorry, he's really been swamped, and that I do keep bugging him about it, and that we will bring that to you. He is researching it. So I, I apologize it hasn't been brought sooner, but it's, it's, he said blame him, but I am not, I'm gonna tell you, I keep bugging him about it all the time, and we will bring it to you.
Thank you. Any further future agenda items, legal opinions? No? Fantastic.
Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you all, thank you all. Your turn, George.